First of all, body. Go ahead. I dare you. Terrell left. So then I have one hanging from my toolbox, which is not going to be proud of that. I want to pull my stuff from the box.
Testing, testing?
Oh, I know. Yes.
What? I live $300. I didn't take it.
Did you get my email?
I saw it, yeah. Yeah, I saw it. We're back for everybody else yet, so. You just tell me. Sounds good. I appreciate it.
My late wife's cousin just made one.
It's got radar.
He's taking off. I turn around and he reached up and touched me on the shoulder. Go ahead. Touch me again. They got the foreman and supervisor, chief juror, air waiter.
Yes, I didn't get it.
Don't know how that would look.
If you hold it down, I'll pull up a sun gun. You wouldn't know what it is.
That's what Jim gives me, the collection.
I get those every Saturday.
And he got me a buddy. Big chocolate bunny one time that something helped themselves too when it was balanced.
Yeah, I got a chocolate bunny. And told, rode on me out. In a box, you know, little box. So I rode around there, you know, at the Easter.
We did see that come down. He was starting to decked out for Sam.
Well, you know, I'm good at this. So then I get a call from somebody else and go, "Why'd I just saw you?" We need a Santa Claus on Sunday today.
So do you have the suit and everything over there?
I didn't get the suit. I had it. But someone told me today it looks like it was cheaply. They said, "Blue two pieces of string right here."
I gotta get out of here so I can pack this place.
That's the only reason I'm gonna give it to him.
You know, I figured I'd do a little bit better job.
I'm going tonight and vote the majority. I'm walking. Firstly, the.
Yes. No, you can pass. If it's down in the handbook, you reach the handbook system. Yes, you can pass.
Hi.
Hey, door is open.
So I'm just gonna say.
The house could be.
They didn't let me. There's all those bank balances. What are you talking about?
Oh, that sounds like fun.
Is that safe?
I think it sounds like. They should have had fun. They didn't. I think that sounds cool.
Man, look at you.
Hey, Mark. Are you?
Jim?
Yes. Are you gonna talk about it? Where's it gonna go? Tell them I was the smart one. I speak in the van. Hey. I may not have a master's from BYU, but I stayed in the van. I didn't mean it that way. It sounded like.
Right. So I'll just leave it minimized.
Pick it up.
Yep, pick it up there. Yep. Okay, thanks. Oh, we tested them, yeah. You have to push yours on.
I think I know this one by now. And I get the special one that stays on. You don't have to hold down. Oh, yours has too.
Yeah, our three. Us three will stay on because we do the most talking.
Just outside of the way it says. They just delivered it about half an hour ago.
Welcome, everyone, to the City Hall Council Chambers of Ten West State Street. Today's date is October 9, 2023. The time's 5:30 p.m. I do call our regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would those who are able, please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Poop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Kel.
Here.
Lottie Huff.
Here.
Nichols. Schneider.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Very good. Full house. Time for a public comment. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. You are to approach the mic, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes unless a longer comment is authorized by the mayor. The speaker is to direct comments to the mayor and the council as a whole, and the mayor and councillors shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public and or actually may be taken on items raised in public comments in order that we comply with the open meetings laws. The microphone is open for public comment.
Good evening. Mike Tupper, Marshall Police Department. I made a mistake at the last meeting, and I am here to publicly acknowledge my mistake and apologize for that. And Robert, write this down because there's a retraction in order. So when we were talking about cars last time, I made the comment that we used to use S&amp;S Auto, and then we found out that they were outsourcing that work. Over the weekend, somebody contacted me and pointed out the error of my ways. I'm wrong about that, completely wrong about that. So I have directed staff to make sure that we get a competitive quote from not just Sign Pro in town, but S&amp;S Auto and anybody else in Marshalltown that might put decals or logos on police cars. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge my mistake. I know you all are probably used to me making mistakes, but I just wanted to say I'm sorry to S&amp;S Auto, and I appreciate the citizen that called me and set the record straight. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anyone else?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So a couple of weeks ago, I had an incident with a pit bull. My mother's neighbor's dog decided he didn't want to obey the in-ground fence and decided to be very aggressive. Had to call the police. The police came, and I thought it was kind of an interesting event, but because the police officer wouldn't get out of his car, and he eventually got his car between me and the dog, so I was able to exit the scene, and then backup came. And out of the two cars, they didn't have a dog noose because the only dog noose they said that we own was in the car that was in the shop. So that didn't work out so well for everybody. But then, just a couple of days ago, there was another event with a pit bull on the north side of town with myself and councillor Thompson. And we were at a local business, and two pit bulls, one nice puppy, one not so nice, decided to come and get in our faces. Mr. Thompson was lucky enough to stay inside of his safe van while I stood outside. He called the police, and the police came, and they investigated and cited the owners of the dogs. So we do have pit bull problems in Marshalltown. Thanks.
Hello, Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. Man from San Antonio, Texas was attacked in his backyard by a neighbor's dog and died from his injuries. Paul Striegel, 47, died on Sunday nearly a month after he was mauled by a neighbor's pit bull. He was attacked while sitting in his backyard. Initially, he lost a hand, then he had to have the arm amputated. He ultimately lost his life due to the extensive damage inflicted on the rest of his body. On September 27th, a judge ruled that the male dog had to be euthanized. Owners cooperating with the investigation could face criminal charges. In the USA, around four million people are bitten by dogs every year, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Larger breeds like pit bulls are often associated with more deadly attacks. Between 2005 and 2019, 521 people were killed by dogs in the U.S. Of those, 346 or 66% were caused by pit bulls. The popular American bully extra-large breed is under fire after a series of attacks that prompted the British government to ban them under the Dangerous Dog Act. What is an American pit bull XL? And why are they being banned? According to the Guardian newspaper, the American bull is the largest variety of American pit bull. The dog is a mix of other pit bull terriers which have been banned in the UK since 1991, with other breeds such as the American Staffordshire terrier and the American bulldog. In November, the dogs are bred with this way with the sole purpose of bypassing the law because the law is breed-specific. November 10, 2021, a 10-year-old boy died after being attacked by an XL bully. In March of '22, a toddler was mauled to death by the same breed outside Mercy in England. Most recently, Ian Price, age 52, was attacked and died. Two of the latest incidents have pushed the government to take action. On September 12th, Prime Minister Rishi Sunak said in a statement, "It is clear that this is not a handful of badly trained dogs. It is a pattern of the breed, and it cannot go on." The prime minister then outlined to legally define the breed and then outlawed. "Our law is a breed specific and it cannot contain..." Excuse me, "does not currently contain this breed so that we can outlaw it." So the first vital step needs to happen, and happen fast. We will ban the breed under the Dangerous Dog Act. Why am I telling you about what is happening in the United Kingdom? Because, as you can see, some countries are banning certain dog breeds, saying that some breeds exhibit more aggression. The United Kingdom plans to ban pit bulls by the end of the year because the breed is considered a danger to all communities for the attacks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Kevin Pink. I am the vice president of the Marshalltown Library Board of Trustees, and I am here this evening to express the library board's deep concern for future library funding. In 2015, Marshalltown voters approved the special library levy. Passage of the library levy allowed us to be open on Sundays, provided more funding for books, technology, programming, and building upkeep. In the last legislative session, we saw passage of House File 718. And one of the outcomes of this bill is the elimination of the voter-approved special library levy for 99 Iowa libraries. Our public library will be losing $200,000-plus from our budget due to the loss of the voter-approved levy. This is the third significant cut the library has seen over the past decade. The board understands that the city is already facing a deficit in the general fund. The loss of the library levy just adds to our city's budget issues. We hope, as the city moves forward into preparing future budgets, that the council keep in mind the importance of the library to our community members. We understand that the state has designed a complicated formula that runs through fiscal year '29, under which the city will still collect some amount of money that prior to the passage of House File 718 was designated for the library budget. And we hope that the council will still direct that money to be included in the library's budget. The library board and staff look forward to working with the city council, the city administrator, and city staff on funding library service. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Sarah Rosenbloom, library director. We ask Kevin to speak tonight about our upcoming fiscal challenges. And just in case you haven't heard, I know I've talked to some of you that I started talking about this in February. I spoke many times to Senator Edler. I actually spoke to Senator Dawson, who led this charge in the legislature. We were very disappointed that the voter-approved levies in 99 libraries were basically wiped away with a pen. And we are concerned about funding the library and maintaining the service levels that we provide now. Thank you.
Deb Milliser, Director of the Marshalltown Central Business District. And I don't have a heavy subject to talk about. I wanted to talk about a positive subject. I wanted to share with the council and the audience that the Marshalltown Central Business District has been working very hard on our economic vitality. And one of the things that we are doing is here on October 29th, we are having a treasures tour, Step Into Progress. We have six buildings that we're going to highlight in the downtown, including ones that have already or are in progress of being revitalized. And we have one that has a lot of opportunity. So we are making strides. Our downtown is looking better and better all the time. And we are ready to start moving forward. So I just wanted to put that out there. If you're looking for information, you can look at our Facebook or our website or contact one of our... I'm sorry, our board members or give me a call. But anyway, I think it's a great thing that's coming. I look forward to doing it, and I hope that you'll join us that day.
Sometimes it's hard not to comment on things like that.
It is. My other comment was about that I.
I come to think of it, the mayor gets to talk in a little bit. So when it's my turn, I will.
Oh, the mayor gets to talk right now? I'm so sorry. I thought you were responding to me.
I was, but go ahead if you had something.
Oh, I was gonna say my other comment was, "I don't know anything about pit bulls. I resemble my dog, which is a poodle." It's a joke.
Oh, you're out of order again. Anybody else? Okay. That makes it time for mayor, council, and administrator comments. Does any councillor have any comments tonight? Mister Administrator, how about you? Okay. Well, it's my turn then. That treasure tour, the tour of treasures, is one of the most fascinating things I've been on in my experience here in Marshalltown. Haven't missed it in years past. I'm afraid I may have to miss it this year, but it is absolutely fascinating to see what is up above in the second and third stories around downtown and the living spaces that have been developed and that sort of thing. So I can't encourage you... Well, and I think I'm going to be selling tickets to, I'm gonna get some to the Rotary Club. People really, anybody who's been on it will vouch for the fact it's absolutely worth the time and small money to pay to go on it and see it. I was almost late tonight because I'm the first recipient of a Narcan package. There was an open, a meeting, an open house type of thing at the YSS building, which is connected to this building, starting at 5 o'clock tonight. If you walk outside and turn around the corner and go past City Hall and past YSS, you will see the actual Narcan box that is there now. It has free Narcan, or actually naloxone, I think is the formal name for it, that can save somebody's life if they are experiencing overdose of opioids. Sometimes those are because people are taking things they shouldn't. Sometimes people are taking things that they think are okay, and they aren't. And it is one good antidote that can save somebody's life. This program was started by a mother who lost her son, and his life might have been saved had he had something like this available. We're the third box in the state now. Her goal is to hit all 99 counties. I suggested to her husband and her that they contact the service clubs, Rotary, Community Foundation, Thai Foundation around here and places like that because if people can find out how lives can be saved with something like that, they will gladly donate to something like that. And so I just wanted to tell you, it's another highlight of another thing in town here being done by a volunteer and now run in front of one of those great organizations that's now part of our building complex here. So those are the two things I wanted to talk about tonight. With that said, let's move on to see if anybody wants to move for approval of the consent agenda. It's my understanding nobody asked to have anything removed from it tonight. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd move to approve, Your Honor.
I'd move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you. Rule call first.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Very good. Read away.
Approve the minutes for the September 25th, 2023 meeting. The bill lists an amount of $1,542,253.23. Approve the liquor license renewals for Aldi, Inc. at 2405 South Center Street, Casey's General Store, number 3228, and 916 East Main Street with ownership amendments. Opa Grille at 4 West Boone Street. Supermarket Villachewato at 107 North Center Street. appoint air call to the library board of trustees for a term ending June 30th of 2029. Resolution 2023-191, approving the completion of the demolition of 910 South Second Avenue by Lansing Brothers Construction Company, Inc. Resolution 2023-192, setting a public hearing on the urban renewal plan amendment for the Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Three. Resolution 2023-193, setting date for public hearing on urban renewal plan amendment for the Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Four. Resolution 2023-194, approving an engagement letter with Bond Counsel Dorsey &amp; Whitney, LLP, for the 2023 A General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bond Issuance. Resolution 2023-195, setting date for the public hearing and additional action on proposals to enter into general obligation loan agreements and to borrow money thereunder.
Thank you. Onto resolutions. What is our first one of those?
We have a public hearing in Resolution 2023-196, providing for the vacation of the east-west alley behind 1108 and 1110 West Church Street and approving the quitclaim deed to the city.
Let me declare the public hearing is open right now first at 5:46 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments, if any. And if none, then time for staff review.
Yes, Your Honor. This will complete the vacation of a landlocked portion of alley behind 1108 and 1110 West Church Street. The adjacent property owners have advised that they wish to purchase the right-of-way. So we, this will complete the vacation of the alley and we will set the public hearing for the conveyance and transfer of the right-of-way to the adjacent owners at the October 23rd meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Any council comments? None. I'll declare the public hearing is closed then at 5:47 PM and entertain a motion to approve it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Rule call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Very good. That one carried. What's our next one?
Public hearing in Resolution 2023-197, approving an amended development agreement with Willard Hopkins, LLC, authorizing tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Thank you. And that public hearing I declare to be open now at 5:47 PM. I'll bet you did not receive any written comments.
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comment. Time for staff review then.
Yes, this was an agreement in March of 2022. The council approved a TIF development agreement for the Willard Hopkins project at 32, 34, and 36 West Main. In the plan, up to $750,000 of TIF payments were authorized. In the actual development agreement, that was reduced to $508,000 to a pending grant. That grant has since gone away and is not going to be part of this project. So staff recommends we take that back up to the full authorized $750,000.
And time for council comments. I will declare the public hearing is closed then at 5:48 PM and entertain a motion to approve this one.
Move for approval.
Second.
Rule call.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Very good. That carried. Onto item H, ordinances. What's our first one?
Ordinance 15072, to amend the code of ordinance as city of Marshalltown, Iowa by amending 53.002 Stormwater Billing and Collection, first reading.
Rule zone for motion.
移到 Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
The discussion.
Yes, Your Honor. This section outlines the stormwater and billing collection procedures, and the code was amended in June to authorize the waterworks to complete these procedures as needed. There was an error in the ordinance noting that liens are certified to the county auditor and that should be to the county treasurer. So this amendment will correct that. Following the first reading, there is a motion to waive the second and third reading.
Very good. Any discussion up here? Any discussion by the public? Rule call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. And our second ordinance, please.
Ordinance 15073, to amend Chapter 50, garbage and refuse by appealing sections 50.001 through 50.049 and adopting new code sections that amend the regulations for receptacles, specifications, location of receptacles, and enforcement of regulations, first reading.
Any motion to approve this one?
移到 Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second? Discussion on this first by the council. If staff would like to discuss this one, we could do that or we could call for public comment and give you rebuttal, Heather.
That would be fine.
Okay. Public comment.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I think you should allow the receptacles provided by the garbage haulers to be at the street. I've lived in communities for a long time that have receptacles by the street. And yes, they have snow. We dealt with it. However, there was rules. You could not put things beside your receptacle. If you couldn't fit it in your receptacle, you needed to save it until the next garbage pickup. Or if you had too much garbage over a long period of time, then you needed to get at least two receptacles or however many receptacles you needed. But one of the problems we've got is the haulers can't hire people to work. And they have to automate. The only way they can automate is have the receptacle at the street. They can't have the receptacle at the house. Otherwise, the driver has to get out, go get the receptacle, and he might as well just empty it in a truck. That's kind of silly. And as the population gets older, I think there will be consolidation of garbage haulers. And I really think the automation is necessary to keep a clean street and a clean city. Thanks.
Any other comment by the public?
Doris Kinnick, 2020 Catalina Place. I have, I just have clarification here. It's part of the ordinance 50.027, frequency of collection. Collections of garbage or refuse should not be made less than one time per week. Currently, I have garbage every other week because I don't need to have it every week. There's only my son and I, and we don't have a lot of garbage. We actually have more recycling than we have garbage. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention. I don't know if that's something that you're looking at changing as well. But just a reminder that there are some people who are only single people and they don't need to have garbage every week. So thank you very much.
Heather, you're welcome to address it or I could call a roll. Your call.
Heather Thomas, Public Works. To confirm, the ordinance is, as discussed last time, that does provide for the ability for haulers to place hauler-provided receptacles at the curb. Also, in regards to garbage outside of the receptacle, the language is in the current ordinance, just as it has been previously, that the only allowance is that garbage be placed in the receptacle. As far as clarification goes into the frequency of collection, there was, none of the garbage haulers provided any language different or requested a change to that ordinance. So we will plan on leaving it as a minimum of once per week for a collection. And I suppose if there's a homeowner that doesn't generate that much and only wants it to provide their garbage outside, you know, once every other week, I think that's still fine. But I think the haulers still offer it as a weekly basis. And I'm open to any additional questions.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Heather?
Your Honor, I have a comment if I could. So the last meeting I talked about, well, I actually proposed a motion to direct city staff to work with the haulers to find a set of days where streets could have a set day. The whole problem to me is, I think the garbage by the curbside is kind of a straw man, where the real problem is we can't enforce our ordinance because we have no idea which house gets garbage picked up on which day. We can't expect ordinance enforcement, which in the ordinance itself says that the haulers shall help the city with ordinance enforcement. I think that historically meant that they were in charge of it more than the city was. But I don't think anybody can enforce this ordinance as written unless we have fixed days. Another option would be to mark all garbage containers with the address and hauler names so that you can at least figure it out. But I would really, I'd like to see what we could at least meet, I'm not, with the city staff, meet with the haulers to see if we could set up a schedule per street. I think that fixes a lot of problems if we can do that. So I would like to make the motion to direct city staff to work with the haulers to come up with a proposal for what a street schedule could look like.
I will read that as a motion to amend and call for a second if there is one.
I'll second that.
I don't think that's debatable, so let's vote on the motion to amend first.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Hoop.
No.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. So staff is now directed to either the haulers. And now back to the original motion. Is there any other discussion on it or I'll call the roll on it?
Your Honor, if I may.
If you may.
Since we just passed an amendment to this, which really doesn't make sense, because now we're going to vote on an amendment that says, or vote on a motion that's not going to be talked to the other haulers about. So I'm not sure what the proper procedure is here, Your Honor.
So isn't this a motion that's been amended? So we have to, so it's as amended?
You know, and another point was just pointed out to me, too, that's a good one, too. That very motion was made at the last meeting and failed. And I suppose the proper way to bring it back, well, I'm not sure if that requires. It's not like we tabled it and we're taking it off the table.
Your Honor, point of order, two people who voted against that last time voted in favor of. So I guess my, one of my suggestions would be is if any of those who voted against it last time wanted to be the initiator of the amended motion, that would then correct set case.
Right. I think I'll let the, the motion has carried. I'll let that stand. And let me ask Mr. Thompson to repeat or restate what it is that you are suggesting we do now.
I guess I'm asking for clarification, Your Honor, that we're voting on an amended ordinance now that contradicts itself. Because one, we have to meet with the haulers to finalize this, and this one doesn't have that language in it. Am I missing something here?
Since it was amended, Your Honor, doesn't that mean if we pass something, we'll pass as amended? So in real life, we're just passing a second time what was approved prior.
That's my interpretation, too, but it is now with a new direction to staff. So even if the ordinance is amended, staff is now directed to have a meeting with the haulers to try to come up with a schedule.
We would propose a city staff, if the direction is going to change, to change the ordinance that drastically, that the, if the route is to go segmented through town, that the segments would be included in the ordinance language to be voted upon. So I think I would recommend a tabling of this ordinance first reading until city staff has time to work with haulers. I don't anticipate that to come back at the next council meeting. I think we're going to need more than two weeks to be able to make those communication and discussion with the haulers.
Point of order, I guess my question would be that Section 50.021, Section B, that has licensed haulers provide maps to coverage area in the county, which areas are to be picked up on what days. If something were to change, it's already covered in the ordinance as written?
I'm not familiar enough with that ordinance to reply myself. Our clerk, the capable clerk, just made the suggestion, too, that this would not be the first, second, third reading type of thing because it would be enough of a change to take that back, back to the drawing board, whether it's called the first reading all over again or we're tabling it until we get a better direction from staff. But go ahead.
Yeah. Section 50.021 does refer to maps provided to the city of the days, but it does not have any language in there that allows the city to dictate which days of the week those sections are. So the intent would be that the haulers would provide information to the city as far as which sections of town they would be picking up and which days of the week. But it doesn't have any language in there that provides city staff to direct the licensed haulers on which day of the week they're able to pick up.
I didn't, I guess, hear that specifically in the amended motion that we were dictating at this point in time, or did I misinterpret? No, I don't, I think this is a fact-finding mission that I was, we were directing staff to do. Could I, what if we just voted this down? Is there, it would be different enough that it could come back, couldn't it? With the direction to staff, just kind of implicit?
That's my understanding on how different this would be, that it could come back. It'd be like tabling it without a requirement that somebody who voted not to table would bring it back.
Are there complications if we brought this exact same thing back? If the discussions go poorly, would there be some parliamentary issues with that?
I suppose that's why I wish I had invited the city attorney to attend all meetings, but I'm trying to save us money by not doing that. That probably would be something I would refer to our city attorney to determine between now and then. But my understanding and what I would propose is that if, after the discussions, well, actually, the city staff will be coming back to us, probably not within two weeks, but maybe the meeting after that. And if the result is the discussions went nowhere, we're at about the same point we are today, where we can decide if we want to go forward with it or not, what the ordinance has drafted. Any objection to that up here?
Your Honor, we do have a parliamentarian in the meeting by our council manual. That's the city administrator if the city attorney's not here. But also, I guess I'm okay with voting this one down and making sure that the one that comes back is a different iteration somehow, so we don't have that issue of bringing back the same motion, same ordinance. The other reason I would vote this one down tonight is what Ms. Kinnick brought up is, I'm assuming she's getting, her and people like her are getting a discount on their bill for picking up only twice a month instead of four times a month. So I just don't see where we're in a position to force people to pay twice as much or more. I think that needs to be, I think there's other things that need more clarification. And maybe what I suggest is maybe a couple of councilors need to sit in on that meeting with the haulers next time so we can find some middle ground with the haulers. So we bring back something that we can vote on that makes sense for all of us.
Yeah. I also felt funny not having mentioned that we did get, I assume everybody up here got the same letter I did from a citizen that recommended that we revisit the idea and not have the, for the looks of things, not have the cartons, containers, or whatever they're called, receptacles up to the curb. Well, unless somebody has a better idea, let's go ahead and consider this matter is tabled unless somebody wants to call for a vote on the- tabled, unless somebody wants to call for a vote on the pending motion. And in the meantime, city staff will have the directive to meet with the haulers. I like the suggestion that we involve a couple of counselors. I'll take volunteers later, or if I don't get any, I will appoint a couple to do that.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I concur with Counselor Thompson that we need to vote down the ordinance and then follow through with the amendment with city staff, and then bring it back with a rewritten language.
I'll take, I'll take that as a motion to call the question, that's non-debatable, that's, if everybody understands what that is now, call, the roll call on that one. And if you vote yes, that means that we'll vote down this ordinance with the idea that we'll be revisiting it in the future.
The original motion on the table, we have a motion by Isom, second by Schneider, to approve the ordinance as proposed.
Exactly, sorry about that. I misdirected everybody, including myself. So, the question is, if you vote yes, it is to approve the ordinance as proposed here in writing and what has been read to the public. Let's call the roll on that.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
Nichols?
No.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
No.
Cal?
No.
Very good. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Councilman Schneider just told me that he'd like to be on that committee. Okay?
Is there a committee you're not on? Thank you for volunteering. Anybody else that want to throw their name in on that one now? I'll probably just draw it out of a hat then, later. Okay.
I'll, I'll help.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you guys, both of you, appreciate it. All right, on to the next one.
Ordinance 15074 to amend the code of ordinance to City of Marshalltown, Iowa by amending Chapter 76 traffic schedules, first reading.
This one's a little easier, anybody wish to move that we approve that?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. Every once in a while, I bring back ordinance amendment for different schedules that we have in our code related to parking, to traffic. This one in particular is related to traffic. I'm bringing forward four different schedules with recommended changes. The very first one is related to the truck routes in Marshalltown. Right now, the truck routes in Marshalltown, there are three of them. They are Lincoln Way slash Madison slash Nevada Street, 18th Ave that goes up to Marion, and then north out of town on Highway 14, and then US Highway 30 are the three currently that are designated in our ordinance or, on our map and what is signed out in the field. As we were reviewing our current ordinance, we realized that our ordinance is out of date and does not match our map. In fact, we have a road listed in our ordinance today that sometime in the 1990s went away. So we definitely need an ordinance amendment. In front of you this evening is our recommended change. Highway 14 through Marshalltown has not been historically a city council-designated truck route. However, it is a state route, and we cannot prohibit trucks from driving on a state route. Highway 30, we have designated in the past as a truck route, however, we do not sign Highway 30. We propose to treat Highway 30 and Highway 14 the same, as trucks are allowed on them, however, we don't sign them. The recommended city-signed truck routes would be remaining the Lincoln Way, Madison, Nevada stretch as it is today, keeping 18th Ave as it is today. On Marion Street, we would only have the truck route remain from 8th Ave to 12th Ave, and the truck route would be detoured up on the new streets created with the Edgewood project, on both Edgewood Street and North 8th Ave. We would also go ahead and then sign the, the route going north out of town from there. We would also sign the truck route from the south city limits up to Highway 30, so that it does suggest that trucks going through Marshalltown would go over to 18th Ave, but again, we cannot require that. With, and with that, I will open it up and answer any questions specifically related to the truck routes.
Any truck route questions?
Your Honor, if I may?
May.
Heather, is there a hurry to waive second and third on this? I mean, what's your timetable as far as Edgewood and 8th Avenue?
Yeah, we're proposing not to open that up to truck traffic until the intersection is complete at Highway 14, so I do not have a time-sensitive need to waive the second, third readings.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Sure, anybody else up here have any questions about, any public questions about truck routes? Okay.
Okay, moving on to the next schedule as part of this, it is the section of one-way streets. This is a clerical issue only. Right now, our ordinance has 4th Avenue listed in there, however, in the description and the text in our ordinance, it then switches to 4th Street. So this is just a correction in the street switching to the avenue as designated, no changes in the field as far as signage is needed. The next schedule is stop intersections. We have every stop sign in town listed in our ordinance. I will also be very transparent, I think we have additional work that I'm not bringing forward today, needed in these stop signs. As I go through this list, I'll kind of briefly summarize the reason for each of these recommendations. The very first one on Creekside Lane at South 6th Street, this stop sign is being recommended because that is a new street in town with a T-intersection to 6th Street. The next two are related at Maytag and 8th Street. This is currently an uncontrolled four-legged intersection that we would like to control. If there are requests from council members or the public in the future about uncontrolled intersections, I think people know by now, from the past two and this one as well, that I don't like uncontrolled intersections, so if you do know of one, please let me know, and I will add it to my next list as well. The next sections, related to Edgewood Street and 4th Ave, and Edgewood Street and 5th Ave, these are swapping the stop control on that to accommodate the truck route going on Edgewood Street. The next section related to Edgewood Street and 8th Ave, and 8th Ave and Marion Street are related to the new streets that were put in with the Edgewood Project. As we keep moving down, we get to the area of 4th Ave and Riverside, 5th Ave and Riverside as well. Right now, Riverside and 5th Ave is an uncontrolled T-intersection, I'd like to add a stop sign there. And then the changes at 4th Ave and Riverside is more of a syntax thing, that will be part of the changes that'll come back to you as well. Right now, we don't have eastbound on North 4th Ave, so it's just swapping the, the order of those words, although I think we all know what the intent is for where the stop sign goes. The next section is Riverside Street and Center. We are proposing, again, a syntax change there, clarifying that the stop sign is westbound on Riverside Street and not on North Center Street. The last one is clarifying, I think, a row in the ordinance that we passed in October of 2022 missed the eastbound there, we added the westbound sign there and did not add the eastbound at that time. Are there any questions on these recommended stop signs additions?
Council questions? For public?
Your Honor, I just have a comment. Before the meeting tonight, I was on the phone with a citizen, and I, correct me if I speak out of turn here, Heather, but I told him, you don't like signs, but you don't like uncontrolled intersections more than you don't like signs.
That is correct.
And I think the conversation went well, that he could talk to his neighbors, because this does affect the neighborhood he lives in, and I think he'd really appreciate the idea that we're putting an end to this confusion, and especially with all the, the nationalities that are coming into town, it's better to have, you know, controlled intersections. So I think this is a good project that's moving forward.
Other council comments or questions? Public? I don't know how you have the, how you budget the time to be looking into things at this detail.
I would like to ask Heather a question. My name, Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. I occasionally get to get out of town, and I notice like over at Nevada, they have stop signs that are actually flashing stop signs to get more attention. And so with the point that was made about confusion, if a light's flashing at me going red, that means stop. And so I think those stop signs like that are very good, and they have them in use over at Nevada. So that's my only comment, thank you.
I haven't added the list up recently, but I believe we have over 800 stop signs in town, so the, the blinking ones have their place absolutely in, in certain intersections, but it probably won't become a standard due to cost reasons for the city. Last schedule in here is about speed limits. This is again related to the truck route. Right now, Marion Street is a designated truck route. By ordinance in residential areas, the speed limit in residential area is 25 mile an hour. Because this is a truck route and a transportation thoroughfare, they have the ability to modify what that speed limit is and make a recommendation. That has been 30 mile an hour and stands there today. With the changes of the truck route, we are recommending that the 30 mile an hour only stand in the area that remains a truck route. So that would be 8th Ave to 12th Ave, I did not mean 18th, or, no, 18th Ave, 18th Ave, yep. And then that would change Marion Street from 3rd Ave to 8th Ave, back to 25 mile an hour, as this will now be considered a residential zone. We are also proposing that Edgewood Street from 3rd Ave to 5th Ave remain a 25 mile an hour speed limit. It is 25 today, by code right now, it says residence, residential areas are 25 mile an hour. By the new zoning that was adopted in 2022, it's shown now as an industrial area, but we would like to keep that as 25 for those two blocks. And then we are proposing 35 mile an hour on the truck route that is newly created with Edgewood Street and 8th Ave. That is consistent with the 35 mile an hour speed limit on several truck routes throughout town, specifically on Nevada from about 4th Ave over to 12th Ave, and Main Street from 12th Ave to 18th Ave. And I would open that up to any questions.
Any up here?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can I go back, I apologize, to the uncontrolled intersections?
Hmm?
I mean, if those are safety concerns today, would there be any appetite to provide you the leverage just to make those changes? As opposed to coming to us, going through three readings? I mean, we identified today it's unsafe, so we can fix it in six weeks? That just seems counter to what we're trying to accomplish.
I could handle that with a city direction that provides us the ability to install temporarily stop signs and then bring it forward at a later date as part of an official ordinance amendment on uncontrolled.
I'm just thinking, I'm not a traffic expert, so me saying yes or no, I don't know what I'm providing to the context of it, other than we're trying to address an unsafe intersection.
I think that's a good point, and I sense up here, everybody else does, too, so why don't you put up the temporary signs? I suppose we could also waive the second and third readings, have it speeded up a little bit.
Clarification, so that was temporary stop signs, you're gonna bring it through the council for a regular, the standard, three readings type deal to get final approval, correct?
Correct, we would go ahead and essentially install them prior to me bringing them forward. If there's maybe a more controversial one as far as which direction is stopped, I might only put up a temporary one and not, you know, core-drill the sidewalk or anything to install that post, but we would go ahead and, and proceed with that direction if council so chooses.
Would you prefer that over waiving the second and third readings?
Yes.
Other comments and questions by the council then? Or by the public? Roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good. Next item?
Ordinance 15075 to amend the code of ordinance to City of Marshalltown, Iowa by amending Chapter 77 parking schedules, first reading.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works, again. This is a very similar chapter of our ordinance, this one relates specifically to parking schedules. I have three of the schedules that I'm recommending changes at this time. First one is gonna be Schedule 2, no parking anytime. The first item on that one is going to be Riverside Street. Currently, we have an ordinance in place that does prohibit parking on both sides of the road for Riverside from 2nd Ave to 3rd Ave. We would like to extend that no parking zone from Center all the way to 3rd Ave. Initially, this was a request from an adjacent property owner, the city is supportive of this, and my goal in the 10-year timeframe is that ultimately we would remove the boulevard section from 2nd to 3rd and keep the north portion of that boulevard. That will help clean up the intersection with Highway 14 and make that a safer intersection as well. The next one, no parking anytime, next two are going to be along the proposed truck routes on Edgewood and North 8th Ave. The next one is related to the discussion we had with the McFarland area on East Merle Hibbs. I have two line items in there, one is permanent and one is a, an effective date to allow the changes we discussed last time through the end of next year, to allow parking on the, the north side there. The next schedule that I'm gonna talk about is, let me rephrase, is there any questions on no parking anytime?
Go ahead.
Okay, next one is related to the schedule of parking around schools. The Franklin School is one that has been in discussion between the police department, Public Works, and city school employees as far as improvements of making that a safer area to pick up and drop off kids. The school district recently completed drone footage of some of the pickup times, we've also met out there and observed during pickup times to come up with a list of recommended improvements out there. This is one of the aerial images from a drone footage. So on this, one of the issues you can see is there's some double parking along Main Street in this area. By ordinance today, we don't allow parking at all on the north side of the road, so basically all of the vehicles in this line are out of compliance. The confusing part is that this area in front of the terrace area right now is probably not signed the best, so we're gonna recommend some sign changes to clarify that, but that is a change in signage and not necessarily ordinance that we're proposing to proceed with. Next, on the west side of the school, this is 14th Street, it is a jogged intersection. So this area where my mouse is right here is the 14th Street that goes north, and this, where my mouse is, is the 14th Street that goes south. Currently, in our parking schedule, we prohibit parking from 14th Street to West Main Street, sorry, 14th Street all the way over to 13th Street. And right now, we just say 14th Street, we don't clarify which leg of 14th Street we're talking about, so we're gonna clarify the ordinance and, and call it the south leg of 14th Street. So essentially, this small area here would be treated the same as the area in front of the school. And then also, the other proposed change we're making is this area right here on 14th Street, we are recommending the no parking be extended a little bit further. They do have a school bus that tries to make a right turn here, and the parking on the other side makes that very difficult. So those are the four changes that we are recommending, ordinance-wise, related to that section. We're also in, in work with the city on creating a, another crosswalk in that area to make that three-way stop a little more clear during pickup times at 14th Street. Last section, and you're, any questions on that schedule before I move on? All right, snow season unfortunately is not that far off. Last winter, I kept notes of my drivers and areas that they really struggled removing snow. In fact, there are some streets in Marshalltown that we physically could not get our plows down, and I think we only plowed snow on those roads once or twice last year just because of the number of vehicles and, and the width of the street. So this is a trimmed-down version of the list that they've provided us with issue areas. So the very first one, Denmead Boulevard, that is another boulevard street, split street. So the very first one, Denmead Boulevard, that is another boulevard street, split street. Each of the directions and lanes are 18 to 20 feet wide, so when there's parking on one side, our plow cannot get down next to them to remove that snow. The next five are all residential streets that have alternate parking right now on them, but the street is narrow enough, say 20 to 26 feet, that it's very difficult to get by them, and especially at the changeover time, when they're allowed to be on both sides, there's enough vehicles and enough issues that we can't get our plows down. We try to slalom the best we can in between them, but if our drivers are at the intersection and look down and don't think they can make it through, they have to skip that section. So those were five problem areas from last year. The next two segments are both 31-foot streets. Plaza Height Road between 3rd Ave and Iowa River Hospice. I think the number of vehicles, what they observed is while there's alternate parking, I think some of the people are parking on the road instead of the parking lot at certain times for those apartment complexes so that the apartment can get cleared first, and we're having a really tough time to get down through there. So we're making a recommendation of no parking this block during snow removal operations. Walters Circle is a very short stretch of road right between Edgebrook and the cul-de-sac, and same thing there with the two turns there, it's just too close. So we are recommending again a first reading of this to prohibit parking during snow removal operations on these streets. And I'll open that up for questions.
Any up here? Any public comment?
Jolene Ballard, 16 North 2nd Avenue. I question the no parking on Riverside from 2nd Avenue to North Center Street. Is that correct, what you were proposing? Because there are three houses on Riverside that will not have a place for guests to park at. They have driveways, but they're just a single driveway for a single car, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I think that might be a little inconvenience for those people. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Let's call the roll.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. That was first reading, all right, yeah. All right, on to discussion items, the first one of which is the Flock Public Safety Camera System.
All right, good evening. Kyle Stevenson, Captain with Marshalle Police Department. Here today to talk to you about our public safety camera program that we have in town. As many of you know, last year, council designated $150,000 for the police department to look at upgrading the system, and by upgrading, I mean to increase the coverage that we have in our community. We started doing that, and through that process, we created a committee to look at this issue and how we could best utilize that money, I guess, to improve our resources. What that discovered, what we discovered during that was that we have some challenges with infrastructure and some things like that. We also have some challenges on equipment that we found out is either outdated, would need to be replaced, the current system that we have, or also the server that we have to hold the number of cameras that we'd be looking at. That would have to be reworked, so again, there was going to be some money put into that. So we reached out to some other agencies to find out how they did it. Specifically, Dubuque Police Department has an expansive public safety camera program within their community. We talked to them, and also Atumwa Police Department. Atumwa also has around 50 cameras in their community. We found that in Dubuque specifically, they have the infrastructure in the form of like fiber optic running through their whole community. It makes it easier for them to tie into a whole network. With Atumwa, what we found is they have one individual IT person that's assigned to this program that orders, installs, maintains, does all that stuff. We also don't have that here. During our research, we came across some other communities that were using LPR technology. That's license plate reader technology, and that's what I want to talk to you about today specifically. So ALPRs, you might hear them referred to ALPRs or LPRs. It's Automated License Plate Readers. What these do is they're camera systems that are set up to capture vehicle registrations, make, model, color, descriptive features on a vehicle. This is not ATE, this is not Automatic Traffic Enforcement, there's no enforcement effort to this, this is just getting vehicle data off the vehicles. It's not identified to capture any identifying information on occupants. So from like a privacy issue, this is capturing just vehicle make, model information. There's no facial recognition or anything like that, it's just looking at vehicles. The company that we're looking at specifically is Flock. The reason we want Flock is because Flock is a well-established company, and it's one that's being used by several agencies in Iowa and across the country. Flock is a benefit to us because it's infrastructure-free, so it's full service maintenance. One of the issues we've run into with our current system is we've had some maintenance issues. We don't pay any kind of maintenance contract, so we usually find out about an issue with the product after it's down. The beauty of Flock is they actually monitor the analytics of this, and if a vehicle, if the camera's down, they automatically fix that. That's all part of this. 24/7 coverage, so this works the day or night. This is a big force multiplier for us at the police department. It allows us to get information to prevent crimes and to solve crimes after the fact. One of the major benefits of Flock is that we have the ability to get what we call real-time alerts. Flock is connected to NCIC, which is a system where if we were going to check if somebody had a warrant for their arrest locally or across the country, they would be run through NCIC. It's also for missing people, like Amber Alerts, for example, this would also be connected to there. So anybody that passed one of these cameras that had a warrant for their arrest or was a missing person, had an Amber Alert, anything like that, the police department would get real-time information about that, and we could follow up with that. So again, as far as a force multiplier for us to be in more places at once. The other benefit is we, they can create custom hot lists. So this could be a situation where we don't put a warrant out for somebody, but maybe we have a witness that we're trying to locate from a crime that was committed. We could enter that vehicle, and it would send us a real-time alert when they pass one of the cameras. We get crime intel bulletins regularly that talk about crime that happens regionally in our area or across the state. Those vehicles could also be entered into this system, even if there wasn't a warrant for the person's arrest or if the vehicle wasn't reported stolen, we could enter those so that we knew if vehicles like that were coming into our community. Another place that we could use this is any intelligence that we get about other criminal activity. If we know there's somebody that's coming into our community or intelligence about that, we could enter that vehicle. From an ethical side, this is vehicle information only. We're not gathering intelligence on people or data on people. This is simply just documenting what vehicles are coming into or leaving our community or traveling throughout our community. Some of the features of Flock, unlimited users, that allows for us to determine individually what works for us, but we could have every officer be a user on this, but that allows us to do as many or as little people in the system as we wanted. Community cameras, this provides us an opportunity to work with members of the community. This could be businesses in our community, this could be, anybody else in the community can also get access to Flock, and if they did, they could actually tie right into our system and provide that information to us, we'd get the same benefits from those. There's many agencies I'm going to talk to you about a little bit, but we could link up with them, so if we had a hot list alert on and one of a vehicle that we were looking for passed a camera in another community, so long as they were sharing that and linked with us, we would get real-time alerts just the same. This also nationwide network, direct sharing for surrounding agencies. There's many agencies in our immediate area that are looking into this, and there are many already that have this, so you could decide to link up with them. And again, we would just get that further reach, I guess, with our system for vehicles we were trying to identify. This does allow for time and location searches if we had a crime that was committed and a vehicle description. We recently had this very situation. We had a vehicle description, but nothing more to go on. We could check cameras in a certain area for a vehicle description. Through the technology, they're able to determine, I could just put in like a silver vehicle, and it could show me any silver vehicle that passed that. It's even as, they can even do like decals, bumper stickers, things like that as far as technology side. We can do full or partial plate searches, and again, even things like bumper stickers, roof racks, all that stuff can be queried within the system if we have a suspect vehicle description. From analytics side, they monitor all the time the device performance data. This also has full audit reports, so the system would show what vehicles were being looked at, any date and time searches, all that would require a search field, so you can do a full audit on the system to ensure that there's no abuse of the system, ensure it's not being used for things outside of public safety, criminal justice-related. I talked about the real-time NCIC alerts. Again, these would be anybody that had a warrant for their arrest, we would automatically get an alert if somebody passed one of those cameras, and then we're unlimited on the custom hot list that I discussed with you. Speaking of privacy, privacy is one of the things that comes up in these conversations, and it's a major concern for me too. We currently have cameras that are recording, and they're recording, some are traffic cameras, but some are parking lots, and we're recording people moving about in our community. So this is kind of an expansion of that, and this is solely based off vehicle information only, so people have less of an expectation of privacy as they're driving around, I would say. The retention period on this is 30 days only, and all the data that we collect off this is ours and ours only. Flock doesn't own it, Flock doesn't do anything with it. The data stays with us, and within that 30-day period, if a crime is committed within that 30-day period, we would have the ability to go back and query that information. If we're 31 days, there's no recovering this. The data was 100% gone after 30 days. This takes the human bias out of crime solving, it's just objective data that it's collecting and sending to us. All data is stored securely in the Amazon Web Service Cloud. This has end-to-end encryption, so it's a secure place that it's being held now. And again, I mentioned before, but the full audit trail, from an accountability standpoint, it would allow us to make sure that the system is not being abused by anybody within our agency. This is a list of current Iowa agencies that have Flock cameras. West Des Moines University of Iowa, Council Bluffs, Altoona, Clive, Ankeny, Urbandale, Waukees, Glenwood, Comanche, Clinton, Polk County Conservation, and Carter Lake PD. I'm also aware of many other agencies that have been in talks with Flock and are evaluating the possibility of putting Flock cameras in. If Flock, the more people that are involved in Flock and the more people that we have within our network, I guess the more efficient that we can be with our cameras too if we were to go that route. I just want to talk to you quickly about a couple case studies. Altoona Police Department sent us their information. Flock can send you countless numbers of success stories that they've had across the country. I decided to go with a couple more local ones. They resonate, I guess, a little bit more for me personally. But this was an issue at Altoona at their library. They had a theft of a computer, and this was like right when they first got Flock, so they were just trying to figure it out. And the top photo that you can see there in the presentation is a surveillance video, that's a still shot from a surveillance video that the police department had. I can tell you from experience that we get this kind of photo routinely. It's not uncommon for us to be checking local cameras, and that could be people's personal cameras on their house, this could be surveillance cameras on businesses. When we have a major crime, or almost any crime, we're doing this kind of thing and seeing is there any camera around that could help us with this. Unfortunately, this often is what we get, and it makes it difficult to identify. So that same vehicle is seen on the bottom camera, that is a Flock camera that's installed at Altoona. Within minutes of getting that surveillance photo, they were able to search the system and find that vehicle based off the damage to the vehicle, the make and model, and they're able to find the suspect and recover the computer and return that to the owner. The next one, similar story, and this is even a better video, or a better video, better surveillance. The top photo there is surveillance that they got, that's a very clear image. By all accounts, if I saw that video like that in our community, I would say that's a really good camera that you have there, that's very beneficial to us. The problem is, I can tell you make and model off that, but I still can't tell you what vehicle that is. And that adds a lot of extra work on our officers to try to identify that, and there's really no guarantee that we're going to be able to identify that. But again, Altoona is able to take that make and model, search their Flock system, and identify this driver, and this was after an armed robbery. So they identified, arrested, and recovered firearms that were used in a violent crime in their community. I think this would be, again, a big force multiplier for us in the same regard. This is stats from Altoona, this is in approximately a six-month period. They developed 72 investigative leads, 85 vehicles identified associated with criminal activity. They recovered 15 stolen vehicles, 69 suspects were identified with 46 arrests, 60 felony charges, and 87 misdemeanor charges. I've talked a little bit about the fact that it's going to give us wanted people, it also tells us stolen vehicles. So any vehicle that drives by that entered is stolen, would send us real-time alerts. Stolen license plates would also send us real-time alerts. The last case I'm going to talk to you about was an Amber Alert from Georgia. This happened, this was a, like a carjacking essentially. Mom's in the car with the child, suspect comes up, steals the car from mom, unfortunately, baby's in the backseat, so this vehicle goes on the loose. They were able to enter this vehicle into the Flock system and get an Amber Alert issued, and this vehicle was recovered, and the baby was reunited with mom based solely off Flock specifically, but LPR technology in general. When we started looking at Flock as a solution to our problems, I worked with them on a deployment strategy, and that's what I'm going to talk to you about now. I kind of look at the deployment strategy as a two-part system. The first thing that I focused on was our major entry and exit points in our community, and my thoughts with that being that we want to be alerted if we know of criminals that have warrants for their arrests that have just committed crimes, anything like that. We want to know when they come into our community so that we can act accordingly. On the reverse of that, we also have crimes happen in our community, and we want to know if somebody has fled our community after committing a crime. So the places that we covered on this deployment strategy were, if you start on the north side and kind of work clockwise around, is Highway 14 would be covered north and south, East Main Street, 18th Avenue, south of Iowa Avenue, Highway 14, south of Iowa Avenue, Iowa Avenue, west, then you jump up to Lincoln Way, Main Street, and then Summit Street. So we view those as our main entry and exit points in our community. And then the second phase of this strategy is because of the unique setup and the viaduct system that we have, there's certain routes that most people are going to take to travel north to south in our community, and even east to west, whether you're on the north or south side of town, there are certain routes that most people are going to take, or at least that are common ways for people to take. So what we did on the inside of our plan was to set up some major intersections that are going to capture those kind of things, people moving to and from crimes throughout our community. So those locations would be Main Street and 3rd Avenue, Highway 14 on the Anson Jog, or 14 Jogs over on Anson Street. Olive Street would be covered going all four directions. Again, that's by our, that's by our high school, so anything that would happen, any violence or anything that could happen in our high school, that's one of the reasons we looked at that, and it's also a main east-west and north-south road. We're looking at Governor Road or South 12th Avenue, that's north-south, that's a big corridor where people travel from the north to the south side of town. And then the last one that we're looking at is on 6th Street. 6th Street would cover north-south as well, and essentially, this would help us with a lot of movement within our community, but a big one is retail theft that we've been spending a lot of time on. Menards, Tyson's, Walmart, we all get a lot of reports from those, and this strategy would help us identify and locate suspects based off those crimes. Flock does two-year service contracts. I talked to you about earlier about this, I think the council sees the priority on public safety cameras, they designated $150,000. $150,000 is, covers year one, but this two- $150,000 is, covers year one, but this two-year contract, it would be a little bit short of that. So the two-year contract is $201,300. There's some initial upfront costs on installation. The company tries to use existing infrastructure when they can. That could be light poles, streetlights, things like that. That's a cost of $150 per camera. They have their own poles if they need to, and that's $650 per camera. So that's why you see the discrepancy between year one and year two. Year two is $96,000, that's a total of 32 cameras at $3,000 per camera, and that's all-in. That's full maintenance, full service, fully upgraded if technology upgrades, if there's issues with the camera, they replace it, they monitor it, and that covers all those So again, this is, this would be a two-year contract that we'd be looking at with Flock. Anybody have questions?
Yes. So, does Flock also work with, in the constraints of Atumwah and Dubuque for their camera system, or is this proprietary and only Flock? So anything that's not Flock does not match?
Sorry, can you, I guess I just want to make sure I answer your question. To my knowledge, Dubuque and Atumwah do not have Flock cameras currently.
That's correct, that's what I'm asking. So other locations that aren't Flock are not tied into the system, is that correct?
That is correct. So the places that are not Flock would not be tied in. We have the real-time alerts that I talked to you about. So if somebody from Dubuque had a warrant for their arrest and came to our community, that would alert us, but we're not tied to their system. That's correct.
There's no tie with like a business's computer, cameras as well, except if they're Flock, correct?
That is correct. To my knowledge, they're, no one of the others are linked up, so yes, you'd have to be, they'd have to be Flock-specific for these two to work together. There is talk of Flock merging with another company that provides other cameras, though. And if that was the case, then they could link up with, there's a chance in the future that could happen with companies working together, but currently, no, I don't believe that's the case.
Basically, I was just asking if there's a data interface, and there's not, you're saying?
No.
Atumwah was kind of the early adopter in Iowa on cameras, and had quite a few compared to anybody else. And then Dubuque went hog wild with over 2,000 cameras in their county, but they've got the Wi-Fi ability. And there, they do have individual store owners and other people. So when we first looked at this years ago, Dubuque was kind of the gold standard, and we tried to duplicate that. They had Raycon cameras, but we can't, we probably could never duplicate what they've done in Dubuque, is what your committee decided, I think, right?
That's correct. And they also do pay a service contract, too. So it'd be, I don't have the what they pay exactly, but there is an annual recurring cost to maintain their system as well. So again, that's kind of part of this, and that's the benefit of this, is that this gives you an all-in price, and you know what that is, and you stay up to date on technology. It's not that you have to replace these things every, how many years, that's all provided as part of the cost.
Other council comments or questions?
Yeah, I've got one, Kyle. It looks like there's two ways you could really get out of town that aren't covered, be there on 233rd, kind of by Wandering Creek, and then if you go out north on North Center Street towards Sand Road. Is there plans to add cameras there? Because I'm afraid if true organized crime might figure this out. I know most criminals are idiots, but.
[laughter]
The retail theft crime especially, they might be able to wiggle their way through town. So is there thoughts about putting cameras there?
Yeah. So what I did was tried to come up with a reasonable proposal that I think we will see almost immediate success from a public safety standpoint. Obviously, yes, there's other places in our community that I think we could utilize these. Those all, those exit points, entry and exit points in our community all came up. I think there's, might even be one, you didn't mention Olive Street going east of town. I mean, there are some that we know we're missing. What we tried to do is cover the main ways that people are going to come to town. But yes, I think going forward, there was room for growth. And I think really ultimately what we have here is a plan that is going to show us results and kind of prove a concept here. And if it's effective, I think we could look in the future at doing more, or maybe even making some changes, quite frankly. Maybe we would find that this strategy, we're really getting nothing off this camera or that camera, maybe we decide we're going to move that one to a different location. So those are all options. Like I said, I'm trying to keep it fiscally reasonable, and, but still to the point where we're going to see a result. So yes, I appreciate your comment, and I think that there is room for growth.
You bet. And I do appreciate the audit log feature of the software that makes me feel more comfortable with it.
Yes, thank you.
Other council comments or questions?
Captain Stevenson, you talked about how this can be expanded in the future. Can you also talk about the different technologies, or a couple examples of different technologies Flock has as we look to expand in the future?
Yes, thank you. So Flock offers other options, too. So Flock has cameras that are pan-tilt zoom cameras, too, that are in the same realm as this. So it would give us, it would provide other options for us to expand. The first thing that comes to my mind is the downtown area, the business district. We want to have coverage in there, so you could look at maybe cameras like that where you could actually see things that are happening. They also have things that are technology called gunshot detection. So many larger cities are using the gunshot detection, and I think, I'm not a tech person, I think I've clarified that with some people, but I think it basically triangulates gunshots, it can recognize gunshots, and then from multiple different cameras or detection spots, it could basically triangulate and give you, from what I've heard, is a pretty precise location on where those gunshots came from. So there are other options in Flock. They also look at like mobile units. Say you had an event that you wanted to make sure you monitored, you could maybe set up like a temporary location. So yes, Flock does have other options as far as expanding. Thank you.
Anyone else up here? Any public comment on this one?
Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. As a professional insurance agent, a few years back, I did have my business broke into. And thank God for the cameras across the street, they were able to catch the perpetrators, and actually, within about four hours, I got the call from the security system that I had a break-in at about 4:00 in the morning, and by 10:00, they were apprehended. Thank you, Chief Tepper and your staff. And I basically got the things back, okay? The question that I would have, and this might be a legal question that you'd have to ask, Your Honor, is the 30-day retention, when it's gone after 30 days, does that create a legal problem if you have to go through the court system? And, because sometimes the court system's a little slow on basically taking action against that. The other thing is, I really like this idea, and could it be a potential for, I have a certain system on my business now, I won't name it what it is, but this looks better than my system, would that be a potential that it could be expanded to the businesses if they would like to have that on their outside building? Just to protect our businesses? I had a recent episode that happened outside, and thank you again, Chief Tepper, for your staff getting there quickly. There was a woman being physically assaulted outside our offices, and we had to call 9/11. They immediately came, we were asked which way did they go, and I'm like, dang, I wish I had an outside camera. So would that be a potential? The city could be the intermediary and earn some money. Just trying to look for ways to generate revenue.
I think I can address both of those. So the 30-day retention period is more of a privacy issue. What we don't want is years and years of us holding data and tracking where people are moving in our community. That's not the purpose of this. The purpose of this is identify criminal activity. Within 30 days is a reasonable amount of time. And I think to answer the question is, the 30 days means we need to get to the information by that time. If it's connected to a crime, we can pull that information off, and we can have it as evidence. So it's not that it completely goes away once a crime's committed, it's just that if it's not linked to a crime and we're not looking at it, it goes away. Once it is, we pull that information off, and we have the information for later. As far as the second question about businesses, this is actually, my overall goal for this is that we do encourage businesses to get on board with this. I think we have many businesses in town that could benefit from this for a fairly small price to them, either through the LPR cameras or through the PTZ cameras, so they have those themselves. But yes, I think this is a way that we could expand and work with some community partners to give us actually, you know, a little bit more, more coverage, I guess you'll say.
I think the town of Brooklyn is glad they've had some cameras downtown for that murder that was committed there.
Yes. I can tell you, technology, we're seeing this in almost every case, and it's a great thing for us because we are able to solve a lot of crimes we otherwise wouldn't. I'll say the same thing for this technology. I think we will see tremendous results with this, but some of the technology that we have right now, whether it be cameras, whether it be anything else, it takes time to go through some of that stuff. So the benefit of this is, through the technology is, I can narrow this down and just show me, again, silver cars like we talked about earlier. I don't have to go through hours of video to try to find it myself, and you throw human error in that I'm like, you know, I could miss it, or something like that. So again, I think it's a big force multiplier for us.
Other public comment or questions?
Hello, Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. Is this only for cars, or is it, you know, is it for people walking down the sidewalk? Are we going to be taking that, or is there sometime in the future, this is going to be facial recognition, and now we're scanning all the people? So.
Yeah, appreciate the question. This is just for vehicles. This is just gathering data on vehicles, registration information, make, model, color, things like that. So we're not looking at facial recognition, we're not looking at scanning people. This is solely based off cars and movement throughout our community before and after criminal activity. So that's all we're looking at now, and that's not what we're, we're not looking for, even if this developed further, that would be a whole nother discussion for us to have at that time. But right now, it's just to look at movement throughout our community by vehicles.
Any other public comments? If not, are you looking for staff direction here, I would imagine, to get approval to pursue this?
Yes, I'm just looking for direction, I guess, from the council. Again, we know we have $150,000 earmarked for this project, and I guess I'm just looking for direction on moving forward.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we proceed with the purchase of the Flock safety system, and that city staff bring back to the council a resolution approving it, and also recommendations for the balance of the funding of the $201,300.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Any discussion up here?
Just for clarification, Captain Stevenson, the amount provided is a best guess estimate based on satellite imagery and such for location. So this could change slightly depending on the amount of effort needed to install the cameras?
Yes, thank you for clarifying. I should have pointed that out. What they do is look at satellite imagery, and again, they're trying to use as much existing infrastructure as possible. But what they've looked at, they could show up and say, nah, this isn't going to work, we're going to have to install our pole. So if they do that, that would be a change from $150 to $650, but that would be the only difference, and they're trying their best to not do that. So again, it could potentially be lower, it could be a little bit more, but yes, it's best guess for the installation fees.
Your Honor, could I amend the motion to be up to $210,000?
If there's a second to that amended motion, you can.
Second.
Anybody feel the need to call a roll call on the amendment, or just, let's just go ahead and vote on the motion now as amended? I guess I should ask for a public comment before we call the roll. Okay. Everybody understand we're looking at $210,000 as the direction to the staff?
Per Councilman Lauderhouse's motion, do we even need that? Because it's this direction, and then we come back.
I couldn't remember if it had a dollar amount attached to it or not. But anyway, if you vote yes on this one, it'll be asking staff to come back with a proposal, but looking at a $210,000 price tag? Okay. Roll call.
Lauderhouse?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Okay, staff has direction. Thanks for all the work I know went into doing this.
Thank you.
Okay. Next discussion is automated traffic enforcement revenues. Who'd like to take the lead on this one?
I get that one, amusingly enough. This is something that's come up in June. You started using two traffic cameras in two locations, and the purpose of that was to get people to slow down in some areas where it's constant complaints and hard to get enforcement. That's worked. The people that live there see, they have seen several changes. The flip side of that, kind of the secondary, that I don't think was anybody's big intention, but it's generated a little revenue and will continue to do so, just in the short amount of time, it's around $250,000. So if you think during a normal year, that could be doubled. The third camera that will be moved around in different places in the community, think about school zones and some of those places, maybe high accident areas, and continues to expand that. So what we wanted to bring forth tonight is, right now, that's unobligated revenue. So it just goes into the general fund and can be used that way. Or do you want to obligate it to some specific areas? And some things were brought to me as potentials for that. And we want to use this in a way that enhances community safety, perhaps, community improvement overall. So just an example here of ways we could do it. Based on the proposal you just heard, improved technology in crime prevention is needed in the PD, so should we use some of it towards that? And what if we used about a quarter of that? If we say $500,000, that's 125 a year. Well, based on what we just heard, that's about what we'll probably need annually moving forward. A second one that's come up, you adopted a plan for arts and culture, but not necessarily a funding mechanism yet. So is that something that could be community improvement? And then the remaining of that go towards community beautification in our parks. We have some city maintenance entrance points and thoroughfares that we maintain. Would that be necessary? And then something I've heard a lot is code enforcement. We need to do more enforcement, and really, the biggest thing limiting this from that is money to abate the nuisances and to pay for that. So could we use part of it for that? So that was just one example coming forward. Again, like the last one, we'll look for some direction if you want us to bring back a resolution with this or something similar to it.
Thank you. That summarized the memo that we got pretty well. Any reaction to that up here?
Yes, if I can. So I would be for putting this in a special fund as needed, and issues like the camera proposal before us could easily apply. I guess I would be against earmarking it or putting it in other categories, except as a proposal came before the council that we approved. But it could be earmarked for special projects, but I would prefer to see a project with an actual proposal and everything defined before we approve money for it.
And to clarify that a little bit, this would be a resolution that said, here's some types of things. We wouldn't allocate any funds, spend any funds for a specific purpose, that would have to come back, just like what you just said, that would be necessary in any of these.
Other council comments?
Your Honor, for me?
You may.
I guess I take a different view on this, that we don't have the wage study back yet, the corrections. We already run a deficit in the general fund. I guess, I have to believe that people will catch on to these cameras, and this revenue's going to go down over the next couple of years. I think we're a little premature on this. I think that for at least year one, we should just leave the money in the general fund and use it to offset the deficit in whatever other expenses we pick up moving forward.
Other council comments?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Directionally, I'm in support of this. ATE was sold to the ATE was sold to the public strictly as a safety measure, and so us utilizing those funds for deficit filling, or as things pop up through the year, I think goes in the face of how this was sold to the public. And these buckets, or similar buckets, I think directly make Marshalltown a better place to live, work, and play, learn also. Sorry, forgot that fourth one. I think it follows the promise we made to the public, that this wasn't a revenue generating process, it was public safety driven.
Others up here?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I think with regards to how it's laid out, has the intent that we need when we talk about force multipliers, of which we've heard Chief Tupper talk about multiple times, and how we amplify the police force and their ability to do their job. I think tonight was a prime example and fits the very bill of what we're looking for. I'm an arts and culture master plan. I think that plans are great, but if we're going to leave it on the shelf, it doesn't do us much good, and I think the, what we've seen throughout the community, as far as community pride and some of the projects, some of the projects that are before us and some that will continue to come forward, making sure we have a fund that drives the very nature of some of that, some of the stuff that's going on for Main Street, and that will probably come forth as an option to utilize some of that funding. And then honestly, if you read the cityscape every once in a while, there was an article in there a few months ago, that kind of clearly laid out some of the funding averages across Iowa. And if you look at Parks and Rec, just as a piece of that third bullet, we underfund that like none other in this community. So whether you talk about mowing, or weed spraying, or just nuisance abatement, and setting the example from a community perspective on what we look for and desire from a look and feel, I think that is critically important to make sure we're setting the standard and living by what we expect our community and citizens to drive toward as well. So as far as the intent of how this is written up, I would support it.
Anyone else before we call for public?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I'm for this proposal, coming back to us as written. Most of these are quality of life issues. One thing in Ward One especially that we've been dealing with quite a bit is nuisance abatement and that, and we could sure use a hand and help up with that. The police can always use resources and arts and culture. After passing the Arts and Culture Master Plan, I think it's pretty undeniable how good stewards they are with what they're doing. But I would agree to this as it's written, mainly because it's going to increase the quality of life for people here in Marshalltown.
Anyone else up here? Public.
Kathy Steinberg, 309 Summit Street. I would just like everything to be done that we can to enhance public safety, and I haven't heard anybody talking about enhanced street lighting, particularly at night. So few people feel comfortable about going out and about the community to enjoy the things that other people want to do. And I used to, for fun, I used to read Municipal Magazine, and it was always said that the most cost-effective thing you can do to reduce crime is increase street lighting. So I just, please, don't forget that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Nice speeches. We used to be the ninth wealthiest city in the state, now we're 17th from the bottom. Arts luxury, although I like it, and might make my living off of it, is luxury. If I remember right, our valuations went up $30 million, but we're giving away $30 million in tax revenue. So we're not getting anywhere. We're going to talk about some more of that giveaway stuff next. So we don't have the luxury of spending on these things, and we have streets that are sorely underfunded, and the general fund can pay the salaries of the Streets Department instead of pirating 1.2 million of the 3.5 million we get from road use tax, which should be going to streets, which we're using to pay for people. So I think we need to rework the numbers some, and I think it's a little too early to put this in a resolution to give away like this.
Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. I am in Ward Two. I have had the privilege and the blessing of being a scribe recently, the past few weeks. In doing so, as the scribe, we have literally been walking the streets, talking to people. What do you want to see? What would you like to see? I did ask Mark if he wanted to speak tonight, and he goes, no, you talk tonight. And I said, okay. You guys are up here representing the city of Marshalltown, the top three that we're seeing that they would want done with that money, especially when this memo came out and everybody saw it. Streets, work on the streets. Second one was code enforcement, the nuisance abatement. Ward One, Ward Two, all of the wards, there's areas that need to be improved, and we can do that. We can be, I don't know what, Councilman Thompson, I don't remember the exact verbiage, but let's be the best city that we can be, something along that term. And number one, and number three was police safety. I really like the idea of the Flock cameras. I think it would be an excellent idea to do that, to make our city safer. I like the ideas of additional lighting. From an insurance standpoint, that really makes me happy. It reduces break-ins, it reduces costs and other expenses. Thank you, have a great day.
Doris Kinnick, 2020 Catalina Place. Okay, so when this whole thing came up with the road tax and everything else, my idea was to use part of that for the revenue, from the revenue of those speed cameras, to go towards street repair. I think that's a great idea. I also do like the idea of Flock as well. So there's another place that money could go. So thank you.
Okay. Anybody want to venture out to give staff direction on this? That's a poor way to put it. I'm assuming staff would like direction on where to come back to the council with the proposal.
Your Honor, I would propose to bring back the recommendation as part of a resolution at the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
No.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lauderhoff?
Yes.
Very good. That carried, staff has direction. And the last discussion item is TIF-related agreements.
Yes, this one's kind of a big one. We lumped it together in one description, but we need direction from the council tonight, and you'll have some comments from the organizations on how to move forward with the TIF funding for both the downtown business district, for their operating, also for economic development services provided by the chamber, is the second one, and then the third one is to whether or not to continue to fund, and at what level, facade and code incentive grants. All of those are coming from TIF funding. We need these so that we'll put them in the proceedings that will be coming out, and we're going to bring these back. Public hearings on all these will be November 13th.
Since we're short-staffed, and we need a plumbing inspector, I'm going to go check and make sure our plumbing is working.
Very good.
Will the mayor pretend handle things while I'm gone?
Do you have any council comments on this?
I guess I'm not opposed for whatever recommendations to come back with regards to decisions being made on those recommendations. I don't know what there is to discuss here. I guess what direction you're looking for outside of bringing these back in front of us with regards to what's been laid out in the three different items.
What we're hoping for is, I think, on number one and two, I think the third one is to continue doing it with the $50,000 level. The first two have some other requests, and we thought you'd want to hear from them.
I have no objection, at least from my side, as one speaking, that I don't want to hear from them with regards to the request and justification along with it. And I would definitely support number three, is we build streets. I think continuing the facade and code incentive grants that we have downtown and the buildings that go along with it is a key piece of making sure we continue to revitalize and redevelop downtown.
Someone from the public?
Good evening, Cindy Parks, 127 East Main Street, President of the Marsh Town Central Business District. Your Honor, councilors, thank you for your generosity and support. I'm going to talk about celebrating. We're celebrating being our 21st year of being a Main Street Iowa program. That requires a lot of hard work and dedication and support. So thank you for your support. Thank you to our program leader and our, she's the head of our, she's our employee, basically. Our mission is to foster a safe, inviting, and inclusive downtown so that people spend time and money there. We are an economic vitality engine. We are helping you support downtown and Marshalltown as a whole, and that's our whole mission. Our vision is to provide a greater sense of community by being a place that people want to be, retail, restaurants, and businesses. Again, we like celebrating that we are a downtown partner and a community partner. We also are celebrating this year that we are able to participate in the Main Street Iowa Downtown Market Study and Survey Strategies Program. We had 604 people, consumers, respond to this survey. It was done in Spanish and English. We had 32 businesses, and there's metrics from that that we are going to look at, find opportunities and strategies to bring more people to the downtown and to Marshalltown as a whole. People were saying that they would come to downtown to eat once or twice a month. We want to up that. We want to provide strategies to up that so that people are coming downtown once or twice a week. We want to see more people there. We want to see more people shopping and walking around and enjoying them. So we have built our three Main Street strategies. The community gathering space strategy, thriving during downtown revitalization. We all know that we're looking forward to the downtown master plan, and we are looking forward to playing a part in that, and thriving during that time. That time can be very challenging. Deb will be instrumental in helping our downtown businesses survive and thrive during that time. Business activation and development. We are looking at that survey and taking that information and putting it into activation. Who do we want to bring to downtown? What other businesses do we want to see? What do people want to see? They want to see more shopping, men's clothing stores, more family entertainment, and more family venues for eating and that kind of thing. And we also want to apply for a program to thrive again during downtown revitalization. Main Street offers programs for any number of things, and for that, we have to apply and then be able to fund the sources and be able to fund those strategies to help downtown and Marshalltown as a whole. We want to move the needle on economic development. We want to keep seeing the momentum that we've seen. We've seen new businesses being built, we've seen new buildings being built. That's part of the treasures tour program that our economic vitality is coming up with. I'm super excited to celebrate our public, you know, the private investors that have come up, and we've been able to help them do those new buildings and get those upper story housing and the lower-level businesses. Again, just small things like the flowers. It takes 300 hours of volunteer effort. I mean, that's no small effort, and we're not the only ones out there doing that. We are fundraising, and we are not asking, we are being very conscientious of budget concerns. We know that you have other places to put your money, but we feel that our efforts not only help downtown, Marshalltown, but help the community as a whole. That's my spiel. Anybody have any further questions?
Yes, I have a question. So while downtown is, Main Street is being disrupted, like State Street is this year, I'm concerned about the survival of businesses over that period of time. So I have, when you say safe, inviting, and inclusive downtown, when the streets tore up, how does that work through the next few years?
Well, that's a very good question, and we're still working on that. That's why we have a program that Main Street Iowa, there's a gentleman that comes in, and we apply for that program, helps us determine any number of things to figure out ways to get customers to businesses, help businesses stay open. It could be anything from creating little bridges across whatever the construction part might be, or helping businesses with their back entry. We just don't, I haven't read through all of that, but I know there's a program that we can apply for, and we are creating, like I said, this strategy, thriving during downtown revitalization, so that we can create it so that it's safe and still inviting, and kind of maybe even a little bit fun to go through this revitalization process, but still have it so that people know what's going on, so you know where you can go, that kind of thing. But that would be something that we are going to apply for in the near future when we know what timeframe we have, then we can apply to have that program and go through that. But we are looking at that already, how do we do that? And that's part of, you know, our strategy, and we would be more than happy to come back and give you that information, tell you the specifics of our strategy when we get to that point.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes. Cindy, couple of questions. First of all, what did you ever, we gave you extra amount of money last time, correct?
$95,000 for FY24.
Yes. Actually, okay, can I make a caveat to that? It was for our general, it was 50, and then we had the extra 40 for economic vitality, or specifically for economic development, economic vitality.
And before I ask my next question, do you have a plan for that money right now, that 40,000? 45?
It would be, it would be the same that I spelled out previously to get some more help for Deb. Branding, we are looking at rebranding, which would mean new banners, new, just a new, our logo and that kind of thing.
Okay, so now I'm going to, I'm going to ask the devil's advocate question here.
Okay, if I have an answer.
We have been a Main Street program for 21 years.
Yes.
So the city's been investing, investing in the program for 21 years. Outside of the facade grants, in the code upgrade grants, give me a couple of examples of what has happened downtown that wouldn't have happened anyway?
I would say the Hopkins Building. If we didn't have a Main Street program, there's the Catalyst Grant, correct? But, yeah, go ahead. But, yeah, go ahead, Deb.
So, Deb Millizer, Director of the Marshawn Central Business District. You all know that. But, so, we are a Main Street Iowa community, and I think you have a very good question about what has occurred because we are a Main Street Iowa community. I have been fortunate enough to be the Director for the last four years. I can tell you for -- and, well, I've got it right here. In 2021, we were able to obtain a $74,400 grant, Main Street Iowa Challenge Grant, that is specifically for Main Street Iowa communities. That -- only the 54 communities out of nearly 1,000 communities in Iowa are eligible to apply for these grants. It is a very competitive grant. In 2021, we were awarded $74,400 for that. It was a matching grant. So, this is not just money that is just like thrown out. It is matching. The person that we award the grant to has to have their -- they have to have skin in the game, too. Also, in 2022, we had the Hopkins Grant, which was $100,000. It was to help towards the exterior envelope of the Hopkins Building. That was money that we would not have gotten unless we were a Main Street Iowa community. And previously, because I was asked this question, and I only knew about my four years previously, I'd heard about -- or my four years, I'd heard about other challenge grants that were offered, but I didn't know exactly what those were. So, in 2006, the Orpheum Theater at 220 East Main was awarded through the Main Street Iowa Challenge Grant, $60,000. And in 2012, the Blossom Building at 105 through 107 West Main Street was awarded $50,000. The Kibbie Building, which is -- was awarded $75,000 in 2015. Now, I know that in 2019, I helped apply for a grant for our Main Street. Unfortunately, we didn't get that. But at that time, the maximum amount was $75,000, and so it wasn't until this -- in 2021 that they increased the amount to $100,000. So, those are grants right there that we got because we are a Main Street Iowa community. And also, it was made very clear to me that after the tornado, that the reason why the city of Marshalltown are a major factor, that Marshalltown received $1.5 million from the IEDA, which is the parent of Main Street Iowa, is because Marshalltown suffered a disaster and it's a Marshall -- it's a Main Street community. So, that's not money -- that's money that wouldn't necessarily have came to Marshalltown without us being a Main Street Iowa community. We also -- I cannot -- I can't speak to you about what happened prior to my four years of other grant opportunities that have been there, but I can tell you that now that we have started to recover, we're not as -- I'm sorry, I'm a very simple person, really. We're not as ugly downtown anymore. We have been pretty raw for a long time. We, now that we have started to have our buildings, you know, addressed, have our buildings in hands that are going to do something with them, people feel that we're mostly recovered. I mean, we still have a lot of work to do. We now are in the position that we can do things like the Main Street Market Analysis Study. We had to apply for that. That was a $15,000 opportunity for us to apply for. We were awarded it. We were one of the five communities out of the 54 that was awarded that. Ready to Recruit is another program that we can now apply for, two to three years after the Main Street Market Analysis, that will help us either shore up a business that we already have, help them expand, or bring another one into the downtown community. We also have -- there's an ecosystem grant opportunity that Main Street Iowa just announced this last spring. We have more and more opportunities that we can apply for. We haven't had a -- we haven't -- we would have been putting the cart before the horse if we would have applied for some of these other things while we were recovering from the tornado, because we didn't have the capacities to follow through on them. Now, we do, and we're getting stronger. Things are moving forward. There's a lot of good momentum. We're starting to really fight the apathy that is for downtown. Today, I'm getting a little off here, but today I had somebody come in who I have worked on and worked with and tried, somebody who, let's say, is part of the diverse community, that came in that had never supported our program before and came in today and gave me a nice check, because they saw what was going on, that things are changing. So, that doesn't really answer your -- that second part didn't answer your question, but today it was one of those, we are making momentum. People are seeing these things.
Okay. So, it's safe to say for 21 years, most of the money's gone into infrastructure downtown?
I wouldn't say that. I wouldn't go as far -- I don't know what happened prior to me, but I would say that there's been quite a bit of money that has went to the infrastructure of downtown. I also want to say that while we're talking about infrastructure, one of the things that we have available to us, because we are a Main Street Iowa community, is we have design services. So, when we do these incentive grants, city -- well, the facade grants, what the process tends to be is somebody will come to me and they will talk to me about it. I will then go to Main Street Iowa, and we're able to work with them to come up with renderings so that their buildings are historically reflective of our downtown community. That is another service that we get because we are a Main Street Iowa community. So, Dave and Sally's would be a good example of that, as far as, you know, when he redid the front of his building, it is more historically correct.
One last thing, Your Honor, and I appreciate the latitude here. Gabe, wake up for this one. So, would it be safe to assume that moving forward, once the buildings, you know, pretty much are done, will we see the vitality that has occurred very quickly over a few years that 13th Street has had? Is that -- will Main Street Iowa turn to promoting events more and bringing people downtown to shop in the stores?
I would absolutely love to do more events downtown. One of the things that I -- that we need help with is doing those events. We tried -- for an example, we think that events are important to our downtown, that foot traffic, that it's not just that big event like Holiday Stroll or Be Ridiculous Day, but it's ongoing events that we want to have in our downtown. There are lots of communities that are very successful with events such as like Third Thursday, which we just started in downtown Marshalltown, and we're working to get the momentum there. So, that Third Thursday is the third Thursday of each month. There are several of our retail spaces that are -- retail businesses that are open later. We want to add food trucks to that, other things to grow that. There are other events. It doesn't just have to be a big to-do every quarter. So, there's other things that we want to add. Counselor Nichols had asked about thriving during downtown construction. One of those things are -- our promotions are going to have to adapt. We're going to have to do other things so that we are thriving during downtown construction. It's not -- it's not -- it's going to be more than signage that says, hey, you can enter through the back alleyway, and there's going to be a sign above the door with the light. There's going to be many other things that have to go with that, and it's going to take some creativity to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
13th Street had the whole street torn up pretty badly for a while, and it sucked for a while, and, boy, it's pretty nice right now, so that's the idea. It looks like we have all the big pieces to go in now, and State Street coming down, too. It's fun to see the equipment and the structures that are going to be part of that, but it hurts to get there. I tried a lawsuit over in Macocada, and their whole Main Street for many, many blocks was torn up, and they were working hard to survive that and did the last time I checked in there. And I shouldn't be talking that much. Anybody else?
So, I have a different question. So, I appreciate the grants and the work downtown and working with businesses, but my question is, what benefit is it to our businesses when you rebrand? What's the cost of rebranding? Because I've seen that in business.
Okay. I did want to clarify rebranding. When we're talking about rebranding, we're not talking about necessarily Marshalltown Central Business, the organization. We're talking about Marshalltown Central Business District, the location. So, there, in many communities, when they first started out, there's confusion. Are you talking about location or are you talking about organization? I can tell you that I get calls from, like, sorry, the TR, or other organizations that'll say, can you tell me what's going on with the Marshalltown Central Business District? And I say, are you talking the organization or the location? So, we want to rebrand down the Central Business District, the location, as downtown That kind of rebranding, not that MCBD needs a new logo, which we do, but logos for our downtown, that sort of thing. You know, identifying this, like, 13th Street District has a very clear -- you know the 13th Street District is the 13th Street District. Marshalltown Central Business District, are you talking about the location or the downtown or the physical? I mean, you got what I meant. Does that answer your question? Okay. Does anybody else have any more questions for me? Although it is nice to get out of that chair.
We make them hard just to, you know, keep people from...
Well, I was squirming. Okay.
And I saw you start to get up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As one of the other items on here for TIF consideration, I wanted to provide you guys a little bit of info, background, and direction that we're going and what we're hearing from business and industry. I promised to keep it abbreviated from what the mayor and our city administrator heard earlier, which was a two-hour presentation about where we're at with our economic development efforts. So, our contract was a -- has been a five-year contract. For the last 10 years, we've been held at the $50,000 per year in investment. As I look at the economic development contract that we have been operating under, I would say it is probably woefully lacking from where the business community is asking us to be at and the items that we need to focus on. So, to give you an idea, there are kind of seven key tenants to our economic development strategy. Industrial development, housing development, workforce development, downtown development, placemaking, retail, and then entrepreneurial growth and small business support. Within our economic development contract that we currently have, it really only focuses on industrial development. The reality is that we know that workforce is the number-one issue for most of our major employers, most communities across the entire nation. And if we are not focused on the items that allow us to continue to draw, retain, and attract high-quality workforce, we are always going to be behind the curve, and things will get more challenging and tougher. So, housing, we know we launched a major housing initiative just a couple of years ago. Workforce, we have a full-time individual committed to workforce development in our office, as that is the number-one issue. Downtown development, we play a small piece in the downtown development efforts, primarily looking at the major development projects necessary for either infill development or major assets left over, for instance, at the old hospital or McFarland Clinic and the redevelopment opportunities there. Placemaking, we know that unique and distinctive assets for our community are help what draw and attract talent to a community. Retail, and really, I would expand this to be retail, restaurant, and entertainment business mix, continuing to work to attract both national chains to our market, as well as working on cultivating and driving small businesses to be more successful here, and that couples right in with the entrepreneurial growth and small business support. And so, as we reflected on our contract, looked at the cost of providing services and the changes that we are seeing within the economic development space, we proposed a contract to the city administrator at $105,000. Now, one thing that we had talked about was there was an element within our contract that was looking at the city development process. When an applicant comes in, what's that development process look like? And trying to really focus on being customer service-driven, but also having a survey tool that would allow for us to measure that impact through the community and that ease of working with the city. City Administrator Joe believes that that's something that, at this point, you all can handle internal, and so in our conversation, just briefly about this, we would strike that out, and so that left a $100,000 contract. We know that that's a 100% increase, but it has been a stagnant number for 10 years. What I can say is that this is not -- you are not the only dollars in. So, we do a very large investment campaign, leveraging private business and industry into funding our economic development efforts that has been highly successful because individuals or individual businesses do see the value in continuing to invest in the diverse options that are the diverse strategies that we are talking about. And so, we've continued to see that investment ramp up and are asking for the city to consider a higher dollar amount to match with what our business and industry are not only committing, but asking us to achieve. So, I'd answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Theron Shuji, Superintendent of the Marshawn Community School District. First and foremost, Your Honor and Councilmen, I want to thank you for everything that you do to make Marshawn a great place to live, learn, work, and play. We, as a school district, are very proud members of both the Chamber of Commerce and the Marshawn Central Business District, as recently as a result of having acquired the Orpheum Theater on Main Street. And you know as well as I know the importance, and Mark has even talked about it. I mean, it's critically important that Marshawn be the best that it absolutely can be, and it's absolutely challenging to balance budgets in order to, number one, take care of what we have as far as infrastructure, but number two, to continue to build upon what we have as far as amenities within the community, which is high-quality housing, restaurants, retail, entertainment, and just recreational places. And so, one of the reasons that I chose to come back to Marshalltown after having grown up here and being educated and then being away for 30 years was the synergy around people like the John Halls or the other formal and informal leaders within the community that wanted to do everything possible collaboratively to try to make things better. Because all of us realize, as Mark pointed out, you know, times have changed economically from where Marshawn was back in the '60s, '70s, and '80s, when I was living here, and where we are today. So, we have to -- many of the changes have been for the better. Socioeconomically, not so much, but as a result of that, we have to focus on how do we find solutions to the problems that we have at hand instead of dwelling in the negative and in the problems. And so, I have loved being back to work collaboratively, to try to figure out both, first and foremost, as a school administrator, how to make Marshawn schools the best that they can possibly be and continue with that synergy, which would not happen without collaboration from entities such as the city and the Chamber of Commerce. I've also found, as one of the largest employers within the community, what's been talked about, about the workforce shortage that everybody's experienced and the challenge that we have, that I have, as trying to help improve a high-quality pipeline of employees that want to stay in Marshalltown. They want to work, but they need to have the skills and the abilities to do so. And one example of how our partnership with the Chamber has grown through the recent addition of the Workforce Development Coordinator within the Chamber, it's helped our efforts in working with local businesses to not only build the knowledge and the awareness of what jobs and careers are, high-quality jobs and careers are here in Marshalltown, but then also to work collaboratively to develop the skills and the attributes necessary to acquire those jobs, which is both beneficial for us as a school district, to have students graduate bobcat-ready, so not just have a diploma, but to have the knowledge, skills, talents, and attributes to be successful in whatever they do post-secondary, but to also work with the local businesses, because as we've found, for businesses to be successful in hiring high-quality candidates, they can't just wait till kids finish high school and hope that they matriculate into the local community college or a vocational program and those sorts of things. We have to help guide students to find what their passion and their interests are, for sure, as early as middle... as middle school, if not before. And so, we work really hard to try to help do that so that all kids have a vision and a pathway for success. Our, our jobs would be extraordinarily difficult without an entity such as the Chamber in order to assist doing that. And the other thing, when we talk about housing, we talk about amenities, because believe it or not, I oftentimes dwell upon what we once had and what, you know, what, what we should have down the road. I know how critically important those things are as we look to recruit and retain and enrich people to our organization who need the housing, who crave the retail, who crave the, you know, entertainment or the amenity type of experiences. It's, it's a real challenge to have them come to Marshalltown versus live elsewhere in that regard. And, and we, I, I want very much to do everything that we can do in order to continue to move in the direction that we've been moving. And so, in doing so, I, I absolutely hope that at a bare minimum, you'll continue to sustain the support that you have, but, but not just sustain it, continue to figure out how to grow that support of our efforts moving forward, as well as to focus, as I know you do, on how we can continue to make improvements in the, the infrastructure within our community, the roads, the sidewalks, and the like. Thank you very much.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Since I don't have a title, I only get three minutes. So...
Well, you've already had more than three minutes tonight, too, just saying.
On this topic? No. So, look, we all want Marshawn to grow and survive, right? And we have a immigrant, large immigrant population that reminds me of my dad in the 70s, working to build families and a community. And they're gonna be here, and they're gonna hang around, not like my generation, where 90% of us left and moved someplace else because we weren't, there was no opportunities of growth here. But, we have a large nonprofit or base, which MCBD is now C3 instead of a C6, and they can be donated to by these other nonprofits, like the Rebuild Marshalltown Fund, which needs to step up to the plate and maybe give them some money so that the taxpayers don't have to. Or maybe some of the other nonprofits that can, that control over 60 million dollars in this community. It can't all sit on the taxpayers' back while the nonprofit foundations grow. So, I think the nonprofits, it's time, it's high time the nonprofits step up to the plate and fund some of these demands. They can even fund Park and Rec where we don't have to, and we can use those funds to make the city better. Fix roads and other things. Thank you.
Lynda Clark, 306 South 2nd Avenue. I've attended a good number of meetings, and I want to praise The Times Republican. October 7, there was a front-page article that caught my attention, and it talked about our Orpheum Theater. I heard the amount of money that was given. I also attended, when it was dedicated, a welcome center. I would like it to be seen and be being used a little more to help revitalize the uptown Marshalltown, because it was the first RKO Orpheum built after World War II. We have lost a lot of historical recognition. And the article that was in the newspaper on the 7th, I actually subscribed for four weeks of the paper, because Robert has been doing a really good job on putting the information in. But I agree, we are all tight of money, but the amount of money that the Orpheum received, when she was telling, she got a hundred and fifty thousand, she never broke it down as to where that hundred and fifty thousand actually went. I didn't hear it. She said all these wonderful things that are being seen, happening. I've lived 73 years of my 74 in the same house. So, thank you all for working so hard, and thank you for your time, and thank you, Robert, for covering everything so well.
Yes, really, what, what staff would look for is, you've, you've heard the request. Do you want us to, to move forward with putting that in the documents, or do you want us to do something different?
I'd fine with putting the requested amounts in a resolution.
I need to join Costco because I know I need a hearing aid, and I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm just saying, let's proceed with the requested amounts. So, I believe it was a hundred thousand for the Chamber Economic Development Agreement. It escapes me what it was for the MCBD agreement.
So, yes, the Chamber's a hundred thousand for five years. The downtown was fifty for year one, sixty for year two, and seventy for year three.
Yeah.
If, that, thank you for clarifying that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Staff has its direction. That carried. And we are out of discussion items for the night, so let's adjourn here at 7:51 PM. Thank you for coming.